I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the May 29th County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white binder, and if you need a listing device, Craig up here in the suit in the front could help you with that. With that, I would remind, um, we move on to routine business. Item one, number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the minutes from May 22nd, 2018.
Motion.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $1,070,510.41.
Pay the bills. Second?
Second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for April of 2018, and that is on file at the auditor's report. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is abatements recommended for approval. Olivia, we have item A, which is the Brandon School District.
Yes. We just have one today. It's Brandon Valley School District, so it's tax exempt, RDID 13933, 2017 property taxes, and the amount of $3,917.86.
Is there a motion on that? Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices, and there are none of those. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. We have two today. DPNO number 70359 in the amount of $1,311.88. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning, Melinda Starlee, Commission Assistant. The Commission Office has received an application to compromise lien, DPNO 70359, in the amount of $1,311.88. It represents one quarter point at attorney fee recorded on July 2009. He has made payments totaling $330 of the original lien, uh, which was, uh, the original amount was, uh, $1,641.88. The applicant is requesting a compromise and release of the lien in full with payment of $655.94, 50 percent of the lien balance. He's in the process of purchasing a home for $125,000 and is expecting to close on June 21, 2018. He is currently employed and claimed an income of $45,470 on his 2017 income tax and received a refund of $1,952. His assets listed equal $1,137 and liabilities equal $15,782.50. He's not available today because of his work schedule.
Are there any questions for Melinda? Okay, and the applicant is not here, so, um, conversation on the Commission side.
Madam Chair, I'm always appreciative when anyone is making payments in advance of coming to us and asking for relief, and, uh, I would support, uh, making this arrangement here with payment in full of, uh, or payment of $655.94. And I guess I'll make a motion. Do I need to put a time limit where that payment needs to be made by?
There is a time limit on it.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve this.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is DPNO number 11483 in the amount of $3,933.94.
The Commission Office has been approached by Brent Tucker with Sioux Falls Community Development Affordable Housing, along with the petitioners, to request that county aid lien, DPNO 11483, in the amount of $3,933.94, be compromised and released in full with no payment. The lien fees were recorded from 1974 to 2013. They represent $3,531.64 in poor relief and $402.30 in public defender fees. No payments have been made. In order to help reverse the progression of deterioration in older neighborhoods, Affordable Housing Solutions is acquiring the applicant's home to demolish it due to its unreparable condition. The site will be developed into affordable, single-family housing. However, the applicant is not planning on purchasing a home and will only apply the funds from the sale of the home towards future rent. The sale of this home will require that $4,075.93 in back taxes plus interest be paid to Minnehaha County. Both applicants are unemployed, but the wife is disabled and claims $9,180 of SSDI. Their assets total $1,481 and liabilities total $28,100. Uh, the petitioners will not be available to attend the, attend the Commission meeting today, but, uh, Community Development Representative Brent Tucker will be here to answer any of your questions. That was a mouthful. Sorry.
Any questions for Melinda? Mr. Tucker, is he here somewhere?
Yes, he is.
Did you have any comments that you would like to make at this point?
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Brent Tucker from Community Development. We were approached by code enforcement on this property because the home is unreparable. Um, with the back taxes that are owed to the Minnehaha County and the repairs that are needed, uh, the, the current occupants of the home do not have the funds to be able to purchase or even, or even fix up their home or do anything different. And they have actually set up a meeting with me to talk about working with Affordable Housing Solutions here in Sioux Falls to acquire their house, and truly, that is the only opportunity for them to be able to have anything. With the monthly income that they do have coming in, uh, they truly don't have enough to support themselves, even, even with rent. Trying to get them arranged to be able to get additional social security, to be able to afford at least renting an apartment somewhere. But they, they would walk away with about $15,000 proceeds from the seller home, and that's basically to help them supplement their rental income to be, or the rent to be able to essentially live.
Commissioner Karski.
So you're gonna pay them X in their, to demolish this home, basically, correct?
I'm giving them, or, or Affordable Housing Solutions is going to give them $20,000 total. $4,000 approximately go to paying the back taxes that have been owed to, um, Minnehaha County. Approximately $750,000 of closing costs, so they'll, that's what they'll receive then at that point.
Okay. So the county gets, the taxpayers of Minnehaha County get?
Yes, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure that that would happen.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for the State's Attorney. It, it does say, um, back taxes plus interest. Can we waive the interest, or are we bound to pay? I don't know how much the interest is. It doesn't say in our, in our minutes. Madam Chair, I'd have to look that up in the statute just to make sure. Okay. I, I don't believe that on real estate taxes it can, but I'd want to double check to be sure. Okay. Just a question. Additional comments or questions?
Well, these are the kind of things that we get brought before us that are just, um, very difficult issues. And here, I think that, I think that the city's proposing probably what is the best solution under the circumstances. And, um, you know, I appreciate the work that will be done to try to obtain additional disability benefits or whatever else might be available, but, um, given the fact that the citizens will be recovering the tax dollars, I think that's in the best interest of Minnehaha County to go ahead and approve this, um, application.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
This, uh, next we have opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Uh, about something that's not on the agenda, and identify yourself and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Good morning, Monty.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wadimbach, Minnehaha County IT Director. I had a couple of questions a few weeks ago regarding security awareness training. So I thought I'd just come and, uh, tell you what we are doing and, and ask you if there's anything that you'd want us to do additionally. So, um, in early 2016, um, the IT Department put together a security awareness presentation, and, um, uh, I worked with the departments to have them come through and, and come to that training. We had a large number of departments that came through, uh, attended the training, and then, uh, here in early 2018, uh, it's kinda discussed at a department head meeting, um, and we had some departments that, uh, took us up on that as well, and so we had it again here in 2018. We had a much bigger push in 2016 for that than we did in 2018, but, um, we do offer security awareness training.
Thank you, Monty.
Any questions?
Uh, you don't have to share all your plans because that wouldn't be real smart for us to share our security and safety issues. But the real issue is, is that we do have things in place that make sure that we do not have those problems. And frankly, you've told us before about how many times that does occur and how many times, frankly, they've not been successful, which is about 100 percent if I remember right. So, um, I just wanted to say that that and your transfer of software-related, uh, issues that you and your department have worked so hard on are much appreciated. And frankly, I think you've done a great job in your leadership in all those areas, extremely effective.
Yep, thank you very much. Yeah, we have lots of layers of defense. So, um, defending our network is, um, really a matter of having multiple layers. Regarding our email security, there's additional, uh, modules that when emails come in with malicious links, um, those links can be identified as, as safe and, and that email is allowed to come in. They could be identified as malicious and blocked. If that, uh, software is unable to determine if it's malicious or safe, it sends that email up to a cloud. The URL is, is analyzed, and if it's determined to be malicious on the fly right then and there, then again, it blocks it, or if it's not malicious, then it allows it. So it's a constant cat and mouse game regarding the email security specifically. And then there's lots of other things that, that we do as well. Um, there's, there's just so many layers of defense. Our firewall, for example, we block traffic from lots of countries that are known to be malicious, uh, countries. We don't do that much business with, um, some parts of this world, and so that gives us the, the luxury of being able to block all traffic from those, uh, some of those parts of the world. And I forget the, the number that you're kind of alluding to, but when we put our new firewalls in here last year, I believe it was somewhere in the, the ballpark of 20, um, network connections that were dropping per second. 24/7, 365. There's just so much malicious network traffic out there that we're blocking just through typical firewall rules and those kinds of things, so. Upgrading those different, different layers of security is, is an ongoing process. That end-user training is, is just one piece of it. And we'll continue to, to work through that, and we'll probably make some, some more pushes to do security awareness training based on these conversations and just trying to have another layer of security.
Thank you, Monty. Any other questions or comments?
You know, my other comment, it still shocks me that we have 20 per second, and we have not had any significant issues. So again, your department has done an awesome job.
Thank you. Thank you, Monty. Anyone else who wants to speak on public comment? All right, with that then, we'll move on to regular business. Item number 10 is consider a motion to name the new museum collections storage building, the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center. Bill Hoskins, good morning, Bill.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Suland Heritage Museums. The new museum building has been a great cooperative project between city, county, government, and, and public donations. And the chief public donor have been, Bob, excuse me, uh, Bob and Kari Hall, who both provided the site for, uh, our new building, but also, uh, additional land that was sold to help raise money to construct it. And the museum board is recommending, uh, a name for the building of the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center. It is, uh, the desire of Bob and Kari Hall to name it after Irene Hall, their mother.
Any questions for Bill?
Madam Chair. So Bill, that's, uh, Bob's mom, right?
That is.
And, uh, we sold that land, uh, around it and used that money to help defray the cost of our current structure that's ongoing, which should be opening...
This year.
Sooner than, uh, you know, October.
The, the, um... Uh, will be completed, I think, within the next month, and then we will start moving into it with a ribbon-cutting plan this fall.
Commissioner Bender?
Well, I, I mean, I think it's safe to say that this project would not have happened without the Halls, and, um, I, we've had an opportunity to look at this in our building committee, and I would be happy to make a motion to, um, name the new museum collections storage building, the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center.
Even happier to second that motion.
Second. Any additional comments? Just again, a thank you to the Hall family for what they have given to Minnehaha County and to our future to keep, uh, keep our archives safe, so. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item, thanks, Bill. Item number 11, uh, we're gonna start a series of public hearings, and we will start with a public hearing to consider a motion to approve or deny the 2018-2019 retail on-off sale malt beverage license renewal applications from M&amp;M Gaming Incorporated, also known as the State Line Casino, due to a compliance check violation in the current license year. Olivia?
As you stated, this is a renewal...
Madam Chair, point of order, I think Melinda needs to use her microphone a little more on this, uh, because...
Olivia?
Olivia, that's what I said. I meant to say. Anyway, we need to hear it when we record the show.
Okay. All right, so, um, as you stated, this is a renewal application for retail on-off sale malt beverage license. Because they had a compliance check violation within the licensing year, it does require a public hearing. And I've received no concerns or complaints from State's Attorney, Sheriff's Office, or planning and zoning to move forward with this, aside from the fact that they did have the compliance check. And I did inform the owners that a representative needed to be present. I'm not sure if they're here or not, though.
Yep, they're here.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so is there any questions for Olivia at this point? Commissioner Karski?
I was looking at this one, and the next one we're going to approve, and they both had liquor violations, but the next one had a thousand dollar fine that they had to pay the state.
We're gonna do one at a time.
I know, but I'm just wondering why the inconsistency, why they did and this one didn't.
This one most likely has. I just wasn't able to get a response back from the Department of Revenue.
Okay. And we look at this because they've had a violation in the last year. Do we know on an ongoing basis if there's been violations in previous years?
I checked, and they have not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions, this is a public hearing, so we would listen to the, uh, person, you. Okay, you could come to the microphone, identify yourself, and then answer any questions that they have, so. Give your name and address.
My name is Mitch Rungy. I live at 2112 East Second Street, Sioux Falls, 57103. And yes, we, we did have to pay the thousand dollar fine.
Okay, Commissioner Karski?
Steep fine to pay and, and for just a lapse of judgment. What, what do you, how do you incent your employees or disincent them for checking?
Well, this one is actually a, a longtime employee, and yeah, it was, uh, it was a lapse in judgment. And, uh, we, we did, um, repercussions as far as pay and raises and stuff like that for her, but we have everything as far as the way the licenses are supposed to go shoved right in their face. Uh, we do everything we can. I manage about 14 different employees between two locations, and fortunately, this is my only second time I've ever had to do this in 20 years, so. Unfortunately, a second time, but fortunately, the second time only, I guess, between everyday business, so.
Do you have, you know, somebody comes up and they appear to be under age 40 or whatever, do you check?
Oh, I mean, that's what we, that's what we push for, you know what I mean? We, we push to card everybody.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any additional questions for Mr. Rungy? This is a public hearing, so is there anyone who would like to speak against this liquor license? Okay, then I need a motion or comments from the Commission.
I just, I have a comment, and then I'll make a motion. You know, this is, we take these seriously, and I know you, as a business owner, take these seriously because it clearly has financial repercussions for you. If there's another one in the next, you know, within, if there's two within 24 months, then that could affect your license. And so, you know, we don't want to minimize this. I personally am thrilled if anybody cards me. I think that's the greatest thing that ever happens to me. So anyway, I, I appreciate you coming today. I appreciate you, um, expressing how seriously you take this and, uh, with that, and make a motion to approve the license.
A motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Additional comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The second public hearing is a motion to, um, consider a motion to approve or deny 2018-2019 retail on-off sale malt liquor license renewal applications from Chasers Food and Spirits due to a compliance check violation in the current licensed year. Again, Olivia?
Yes. Uh, this is a similar situation where they had a compliance check failure, and they are now looking to renew their malt beverage license. The difference here is that because they have a separate liquor license, you did actually do a public hearing in November, I believe it was, um, for this same compliance check failure. So I just want to make it clear that this is not a separate failure. It's just because there are two separate licenses, they require two separate hearings.
Same violation.
Right.
Okay. So any questions for Olivia? All right, this is a public hearing, so if the opponents would please come forward and identify yourselves and any comments.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Judy Ann Mick Swearingen, and we are the owners and managers of Chasers. So if there's any questions, we're here to answer those questions, please.
Are there any questions for the Swearingens? Commissioner Karski?
I guess same question for you. How, what do you do, training employees? What's your procedure, your protocol for selling alcohol?
We're very diligent about 40 and over. Otherwise, you always card. Forty and, 40 at least. If they don't look 40 or older, you card.
Okay. And, um, incentives for passing a liquor compliance check or disincentives for...
We take very good care of them if they pass.
I'm sorry?
We take very good care of them if they pass.
And if they don't?
Um, in this situation, it was a gentleman that was a college student, and he was really upset about it because he had no blemishes throughout high school, the whole bit. And if it hadn't been for his college, I think he may have rebooted this a little bit. But because he was going to school and didn't want to miss the school, he went ahead and paid his fine and took his, his, what do you want to call it? Suspension of driver's license and what happened to him. Paid his fine and moved on. But he's still working for us, and he's very diligent about, about carding.
Good.
Yes.
This is a public hearing, so is there anyone who would like to speak against this liquor license? No one, so, a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks for coming back again.
Thank you to all of you. Thank you.
Item number 13 is a public hearing to consider the 2018-2019 retail on-off sale malt beverage, malt beverage license renewal applications for the following entities due to the 2018 legislative session. Repeal on certain malt beverage license types. There are going to be a list. We need to do each one as a public hearing. Um, Olivia will give us the rundown on it, but item A is a public hearing for the Crooks Conservation and Gun Club, also known as the Crooks Gun Club.
Yes. So, the 2018 legislative session, um, they repealed the malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License and the package off-sale licenses and put it all into the retail on-off sale malt beverage. And because of that, uh, the Department of Revenue informed the Auditor's Office that we need to treat these as new licenses as opposed to renewals. So the Crooks Gun Club has had a malt beverage license in the past. They have had no violations, um, or anything of that sort. They just had to pick a new license type, so that is what we're here for today.
Okay, any questions for Olivia? This is a public hearing, so is anyone here from the Crooks Gun Club that would like to speak in favor of this license? And again, just identify yourself, please.
I'm Greg Stahl. Here from the Crooks Gun Club. Um, part of the Board of Directors, so if there's any questions from the council.
Questions for Greg?
Madam Chair, I have a question. Greg, uh, so is this change of law, how does that change your business at all?
Zero. Nothing.
Just more hoops to jump through?
Yeah, more hoops to jump through is right. Yeah. We've had a, we've had, uh, malt liquor license for 15 years, and then five years ago, we added wine to it. And other than that, why are we doing this? It's just kinda like, okay.
Government paperwork.
Yep, another jump to go through, but that's about it.
Is there anyone who would like to speak against this liquor license? Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a mo, motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next, item B, public hearing, is for the Sioux Empire Affairs Association. Any questions for Olivia? Oh, Olivia, do you have any comments?
I was just gonna say, this is the same situation as Crooks Gun Club. They just had to pick a different license, and Scott is here if you have questions.
So, opponents?
Good morning, Scott Wick, Sioux Empire Affairs Association, um, President and CEO. Here for the same reason the gun club was here, just a formality and paperwork, so if there's any questions.
Any questions for Scott? Is there anyone opposed to this liquor license? Look for a motion. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Scott, we just want to see you people. That's all this is about. Item C is a public hearing for the Sioux Falls Campground, also known as the Yogi Bear Campground. Olivia?
Yes, again, same situation. They just need to pick a different license type, um, and they have had no violations, so.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this? Good morning.
Good morning. Bruce Algett's Yogi Bear Campground. Same thing, just jumping through the hoops.
Anyone opposed? Looking for a motion then.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item B, or D, excuse me, public hearing for Uncle Ed's Specialty Meats, also known as Uncle Ed's Specialty Meats Incorporated. Sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, that's a funny one. Um, so, these guys also just had to pick a different license type, and they have also had no violations.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor?
Good morning. Uh, Matt Muntz, Uncle Ed's. Here for the same reason. Had a license for 15 years. People come in, buy their steak, get a six-pack, away they go. Nothing's gonna change.
Anyone opposed?
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item E is a public hearing for Wall Lake Oil.
Yes, finally, Wall Lake Oil also just had to pick a different license type and have had no violations.
Anybody here from Wall Lake Oil?
Uh, Mike Overguard from Wall Lake Oil. Same thing.
Any questions for Mike? Anyone opposed?
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for making the trip down.
Thanks for coming.
We will move on to something else. Item number 14, authorize the chairman to sign the nursing services agreement between Minnehaha County and the interim healthcare for the Juvenile Detention Center nervous, oh, nervous, nursing provider. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning, Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. Uh, April 25th, we were notified by our current nursing provider that they could no longer provide services for us. They had to give us a 30-day notice by contract, which they did. As soon as that happened, I started, uh, content, reaching out to different nursing providers throughout the city. Everybody except for one told me that they could not do it. Interim healthcare came and met with us and informed us that they could do it and that they could do it for only a dollar more an hour than what we were currently paying. So, uh, I've presented a contract to you, hoping that you will approve the services with interim healthcare. Paul Millman from interim is also here if you have any questions for them.
Commissioner Bender?
Jamie, I'm just curious, what, what were the reasons you were given by the other providers that they weren't able...
They were having, they were having a hard time finding nurses to fill openings. It was Volunteers of America that provided those services for us, and... and they had to focus on their own programs first. So, our, the nurse that they had serving us was pregnant and they were finding no one to be able to fill in for her when she went on maternity leave. So they didn't have people they could pull from other programs to provide to us.
What about the other providers that you reached out to that expressed that they weren't interested? I was curious what their concerns were.
One of them thought that they were gonna be able to do it and then decided for the same type of reason that they were having struggles filling their own nursing positions. I spoke to Jeff Gromer at the jail to see if they would be able to provide some temporary help, and they're struggling to get nurses as well. So, that, that's the main reason. I had two that I left two messages for and they never called me back, so.
Okay, thanks, Jamie. Additional questions?
I would just point out, Madam Chair, that, you know, again, there's talk about the worker shortage in our area and, you know, whether it's welders or nurses or any of these with some skill, there seems to be a problem.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna have to abstain from this contract. My real life, we have a nursing contract with the same entity, which I would highly recommend.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
A second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes for with one obstruction. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen is a brief presentation from the Southeast Behavioral Healthcare Providers and Services. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Chris Graham, CEO of Southeastern Behavioral Healthcare, and we're very happy to be here this morning to tell you about Southeastern. But first of all, I'd like to thank you for your continued support of our mental health services. Last year, we were able to provide over four million in services to people to Minnehaha County. So, we are really pleased with our partnership and the way that we can continue providing services. So I'm gonna start today. I have with me Kim Hanson, who's Director of Impact Homeless and the Mobile Crisis Team, and also Melissa Tower, who is our Assistant Clinical Director. So you're gonna get it in three parts, how's that? So I'm gonna start first, and can I just click? So, just so, a little history, we've been in the community since nineteen fifty-two. I always say it's something that's older than I am, which is a good thing these days. So, we have been working with children and family and adults for a long time in Sioux Falls. We have four major components to our program. We have the children's services, we have the adult services, known as Community Support Services, located at Fifth Street. We have a program for developmental disability children that we call Education and Integration. We actually have an accredited school that we serve a hundred and one children that come to us from all over the state. We have eleven residential homes that are part of that program. We also have Cayman Court, what it, it's a twenty-four-bed assisted living facility for homeless mentally ill. So just some facts about us, we serve Minnehaha, Lincoln, McCook, and Turner Counties. One in four Americans will have some type of a mental health diagnosis in their lifetime. We serve approximately five thousand children, adults, and families each year, and we're one of eleven community mental health centers in South Dakota. And just so you know about income, we are eighty-five percent Medicaid, and so you can see that by seventy-one percent of our people we serve make less than fifteen thousand. So, children's services, we provide individual, family, and group therapy, we have outpatient counseling, we have home-based counseling, we have case management, we provide psychiatric services, we have twelve psychiatrists that serve our facility, we are fortunate to have that many. We provide services through the Juvenile Justice Reform Act, which is called FFT, better known as Functional Family Therapy. We do aggression replacement therapy, ART, we do moral recognition therapy, MRT, and those are all part of the juvenile justice reform. We also provide on-call emergency services to the Juvenile Detention Center. Our major components for children, we work in fifty-five schools in this area. We provide forty counselors just to the Sioux Falls schools. There, we do individual counseling, we have group counseling, we provide all the mental health assessments and risk assessments for elementary, middle, and high schools. We also provide all the chemical dependency screenings for middle schools and high school. And with that, we're gonna move on to mobile crisis.
I'm Kim Hanson, I'm here to talk about the Mobile Crisis Team and our homeless outreach program. With the Mobile Crisis Team, we took five hundred and thirty-four calls last year. Seventy-two of those calls were declined. Four hundred and fifty of those individuals were able to remain at home. Forty were voluntary admissions to a behavioral health, and then eleven people went to either detox or another source such as Children's Inn, and thirty-three did result in mental illness holds. Our average calls are about thirty minutes, and the first-time calls were five hundred and seven, so only twenty-seven of the calls that we went on were actual repeats. Our primary source of calls are from the Sioux Falls PD, but we also serve both Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. So, some calls are from the Sheriff's Department, and we have calls from the Brandon PD as well as the TPD. Reasons that we might decline calls are if there is no probable cause for law enforcement to file that mental health petition, the hold, to take them to the hospital involuntarily, or if the person is too violent, or if there are weapons involved. The consumer is too impaired to speak if they're highly intoxicated or under the influence of drugs or alcohol. Or the consumer possibly has overdosed. If they've ingested something, obviously they need medical attention. Or if we are dealing with a minor call and there is not a parent or guardian present, then we would decline that call. Also, when the Sioux Falls PD encounter an individual that is struggling with symptoms of their mental health, our mobile crisis team or our Fifth Street staff may, are available to assist if they contact us with any questions. And then our next slide is some of our demographics. You can see that the majority of calls are to white males between the ages of twenty-one and thirty. And then also, when the officer comes to the scene, they do an evaluation of how satisfied they are with our calls. So there's some of the statistics of our five hundred and seven calls, four hundred and eighty-one received a highly satisfied evaluation. And then I am going to talk about the homeless outreach program, and this is not advancing. So I will just read this. So, our homeless program is funded by a federal grant. It's called a PATH grant, and this is an agreement between the Department of Social Services and the Division of Behavioral Health and Southeastern to provide direct assistance in maintaining safe housing and other critical supports for our homeless and, as well as mentally ill population. And PATH stands for Projects for Assistance in Transitioning from Homelessness. And this grant is only awarded to community health centers. So in our homeless program, we have five and a half full-time staff who provide direct services to homeless individuals in the Sioux Falls community who are also diagnosed with a serious mental illness. And then by definition, a serious mental illness is an individual who has been psychiatrically hospitalized or has been on psychotropic medications for more than a year. Individuals must also have some sort of functional limitations in getting services as far as providing for themselves, have social problems, et cetera. Most of our clients have a thought disorder such as schizophrenia or a mood disorder such as anxiety, depression, or bipolar disorder. And then approximately eighty percent of our homeless people also have a co-occurring substance abuse disorder. And then, once somebody is established through the PATH grant, we work on getting them transitioned over to our care services. We provide access to psychiatric services, employment services, try to get them set up with our benefit specialists so that they may qualify for certain entitlements. We have chemical dependency treatment, housing resources, and then also our homeless program does outreach to several entities in the community, the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House, the VOA Veterans Outreach Center, the Sioux Falls Ministry Center, the Glory House, and the Arch. Last year, we screened five hundred and sixty-seven individuals through our homeless program, and a hundred and twenty-four of those became enrolled as new people to our program. At any given time throughout the calendar year, we're serving right around a hundred and ninety people. Of those individuals, a hundred and seventy-six are attaining psychiatric services. Twenty-four of them found permanent housing through our case management. And thirty-nine of those individuals did receive entitlements through social security or other resources. And then fourteen of them were able to secure employment. And we also provided two thousand and eighty-nine case management services to those individuals. So once somebody is established in, with the PATH program, as I mentioned, they will then transition to our care program, which is our regular case management, where they continue to receive psychiatric services, medication management, case management, individual and group counseling. They're able to attend our Clubhouse Day Program, receive services through our recovery team, which is our chemical dependency program, and also they're able to get connected in with our Employment Connection to help them secure employment. With that, I'll have Melissa Tower.
Good morning. Melissa Tower, I'm the Assistant Clinical Director of Southeastern. I oversee all of our adult programming, so I'll talk a little bit about those services that we offer. And so those are located at our Fifth Street location, just across the street here, actually. We have a lot of different programming that is located in that building. We're very integrated. So the mobile crisis and the homeless services that Kim mentioned are located in that building, as well as we have a garden project that's in our second year. This year, that's something a little newer for us, that are, all of our clients are able to go through if they choose. We also have our care program that Kim mentioned, and that is case management, medication management, psychiatry services for those with a serious mental illness that Kim mentioned before. We also have our impact program located in that building, and that is the same criteria as the care program. However, those individuals have a higher need for medication management. And so rather than delivering medications to them weekly as we would in the care program, they could have medications delivered daily to their homes. Just a little more wraparound services for a higher level of care need. We also have a case manager that, case manager that is located in the Public Defender's Office and helps with some case management tasks there and links those individuals to any mental health services or other services they would need. We have our Clubhouse Program in our Fifth Street building, and that is kind of our socialization program for our folks. So they are open Monday through Saturday, and individuals can come there and participate in social activities, learn different social skills, participate in various psychoeducational groups, and also get a hot meal and kind of learn some of those daily living tasks that they may otherwise not have a chance to, to learn. Our Employment Connection Program is also part of our Fifth Street location, and that is specifically focused on helping our individuals find employment if they choose to do that in the community. So they can provide follow-along services for up to six months after somebody gains employment, and we can be as involved or as, have as little involvement as that person chooses with that process. Our first episode of psychosis program is also located in our Fifth Street building, and that is specifically targeting those individuals within their first two years of, of a psychosis-type diagnosis. And we are one of two programs in the state that do that. The other is located in Rapid City. And we also house our Health Home Program in our Fifth Street location, and that is kind of just a wraparound service approach as well, where there's just a real focus on communication between the physical realm as well as the psychological realm and the pharmacy as well. So just a little more of a wraparound approach. So, some of the services that all of our programs have in common is those psychiatric services. Like Chris mentioned, we have several psychiatrists on staff that are able to provide medications and provide some education on their diagnoses and all of those things. We also offer medication management in all of our programs as well as case management. Individual and group therapy is offered to all, any of the clients that choose to participate in that. We have various groups that run continuously in our building. We also provide drug and alcohol assessments through our recovery team, as well as mental health assessments as needed. We have a few different programs that are evidence-based that we run out of our building, including dialectical behavior therapy, the RAP, which stands for the Wellness Recovery Action Plan, as well as MRT that Chris mentioned earlier when talking about our other locations.
Can you, can you explain what that is?
Which one?
Well, the one that really grabbed my attention was moral recognition therapy. I'm just curious what that is.
Yeah, so we use that a lot for our folks that are in drug and DUI court, and I think it talks a lot about recognizing the importance of following rules and doing those kind of things. And so it's used a lot with those that are involved with the court system. And we do that for both adults and for juveniles, I believe.
To follow up on Jean's question there, what about that dialectical behavior therapy?
Sure. So dialectical behavior therapy was specifically designed for those with borderline personality disorder. So a lot of what it talks, teaches individuals is things like how to regulate your emotions, how to build interpersonal skills with others and be able to just interact with others appropriately, as well as just some general education on emotions and all of those kind of things. And so the program itself can last six months to a year if individuals choose to participate in the group as well as individual. So just another little word on, on the garden project. Like I said, this is our second summer with the garden project. We've been very happy with how the first year went, so we're excited to see what the second year brings. So we have some land over by Lewis on Sixty-Ninth and Louise, and we've just found that the dirt therapy that we've been doing, we have a certified dirt therapist on staff, or she's working on certification, I should say. We've found that it really has helped to reduce stress for the individuals that have done that. They've been working a lot on just mindfulness and how to build, build it into their coping skill toolbox. And then also, they've been able to redirect some negative behaviors and turn those into positive actions while they're actually out there, because they will take consumers to the garden and teach them all the things you need to know about growing a garden and harvesting all those things. And then they also can learn some social skills and coping skills while they're there as well. So that was all of our Fifth Street services. A couple other locations that we have, we have our Cayman Court, which is a twenty-four-bed residential facility, and those are also individuals with that severe mental illness criteria that Kim mentioned before. At that location, they can receive psychiatric services, they receive medication management. They have an activities program there that will schedule various outings and other activities throughout the week for them. They also provide case management, counseling, and then they really try to make it more of a family environment. They kind of try to make it that forever home feeling for those folks.
Do you, are you guys, do you run full at that facility? Do you have a waiting list?
We do, we do have a waiting list, yes.
So if somebody came today, how long would they, would you expect they might have to wait to get an opening there?
I'm not certain on the exact wait time at this point, but I do know that the individuals that run that program will go and provide assessments for anybody who's referred. And then kind of, they try to go through the waiting list periodically to weed out anybody who maybe doesn't need it anymore, to try to keep it moving as fast as possible, but.
Is there any limit to how long somebody can stay in that facility?
I don't believe so. My understanding is that they will stay until they are medically unable to stay. So if they have medical needs that we're not able to meet, then they might move to a nursing home or more of a skilled nursing facility, or if they just choose to, to go somewhere else, but that option doesn't happen very often. People who are there tend to like to stay there until they can't anymore.
Good, thank you.
And lastly, we have our Education and Integration Program. So as Chris mentioned, this is for those with developmental disabilities. So they are tailored to meet each student's individual needs, and we are an accredited school for those folks, and we serve about a hundred and one individuals in that program. So this program provides adult day services for those that are no longer in school. They can also have some home-based services in the community if they live in their own apartments. They provide service coordination with any other programs that that individual might be involved with. We also have psychiatric and nursing services available, various consultation services, provide transitional services for those that are maybe moving from services as an provide transitional services for those that are maybe moving from services as an adolescent to an adult, or something of that nature. And then we also have residential group homes as well, so we have some folks that live with us as part of that program, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for ladies? Commissioner Bender. Brandon Gethin, excuse me. Anybody?
I have a question about the people, specifically the minors, that are denied coverage. What happens to them, and maybe this is for, I don't know, Kim or Chris? What's the next step when those individuals are denied? Where do they go?
Well, it's all up to the parent. Since they are a minor, the parent makes the decision whether they want the Mobile Crisis Team to come in, meet with that person. They have to sign a consent allowing us to do so, and then the parent makes the decision whether they're willing to accept responsibility for the safety of that minor and keep them at home, or if they admit them to AVERA Behavioral Health. And then if the guardian wouldn't be present, and we were unable to respond to that call because of that, then law enforcement would take them to AVERA Behavioral on the mental illness hold.
The ones that you deny, I'm guessing, are because the parent is not available. Do they show up? Because frankly, in a previous public service experience, writing with the police department, you get some literally unbelievable transactions, I'd say. It is heart-wrenching to watch those kids really don't have responsible parents. And how do you find those individuals so you can help them without sending them to an institutional care kind of setting right away, when frankly, all they need is a parent?
Right. You know, we do, with the Mobile Crisis calls in particular, we do follow-up with those individuals, and we really do recommend therapy or other resources that we might be able to get them connected with. We mentioned our Functional Family Therapy Program. So that would be a program for therapy for both the parent and the child as well, so that is real beneficial for some of those struggles with that parenting piece.
I'd say my experience with that, there's multiple times I would wish they could arrest the parents and let the kids go free.
Yes.
That's just a personal observation.
Kim, how often in the Mobile Crisis visits is it related to drugs and alcohol, as opposed to actually sort of a psychotic episode? And is it mainly alcohol? Is it methamphetamines? Is it a cocktail? Obviously, some people are going to have troubles without any boosters to get them in further trouble, but is it a high number of people?
The majority of calls that we go out on are people who are in a social crisis. Only about 15% of the calls are people that were already serving through our programming at Southeastern. I would say that about, over 60% are under the influence of some type of chemical at the time of the crisis. We primarily see methamphetamine, heroin, and alcohol.
I do have one other question, and I guess this one would be for Chris. Being as you have waiting lists, et cetera, do you feel that additional resources are really important to try to fully serve the community? Or are we in a good position now? And, you know, if there were more resources, would you be able to find the talent to staff your operations?
Okay, so a couple, I'll start with the first one about waiting lists, because I think the question about waiting lists was about Cayman Court. And so in that facility, we do have about 21 people on our list to get into that facility. And when we built it, we thought it may be more of a transitional, to get people on their feet, to get the medications, but we're finding that people are staying there throughout their lifespan until they need more intense care. So we do have a waiting list for Cayman Court. As far as services for mental health, we technically don't have waiting lists. We're able to get people in. If it's a crisis, within 24 hours, we see them for sure. So we have not had long waiting lists for many years. We're able to staff it. We have 340 staff that work at Southeastern. I don't know if I told you that, I just told you about the numbers we serve. But so we are able to hire people at a pretty good rate. We get about 100 referrals for adults a month, and so that would be one new staff, really, a month to take care of that caseload. So just so you know, the numbers are high for the need, and so far, we are keeping up. I mean, we could always use more staff, and we could always use more funding, isn't the way it is. But I think that we have figured out a system that we can take care of people and move them along in our system so they don't get left behind. And so did I answer all of that? So access, I think, you know, when I started 10 years ago, we served about 1,000 people. We are now serving over 5,000. So I think we're finding the population that our funding allows us to take care of.
Mr. Benega.
Chris, when AVERA finishes their behavioral health facility, how is that going to affect your placement, if you will, and referral system?
And I believe that's the drug and alcohol, right, that you're talking?
But that's a big part of what you do.
A big part of us. So I just wanted to make sure that, yes, we would hope that we could get people placed easier than we can right now because of the lack of facilities. So that is our hope. And so, because we're accredited CD outpatient, so we can help once they're released. So having the hospital side would be phenomenal, would really help.
Mr. Bender.
So I'm curious about Cayman Court and where that funding came from, and whether it's something you guys are looking at expanding that program at all?
Sure. So the funding, it's about 10 years old, and it was a partnership between Citibank and Southeastern. It was a tax credit project. We could actually use another 24 beds. Right now, we don't have land by that facility really to add on to it, but it is something we discuss a lot, because it's something that we could use. It's just, how do we do that? I'm not sure. But, you know, in Forsight, if we had known, you know, it'd have been great to have two more wings. But staffing is always an issue, too, out there, so we are able to maintain it and do well. But direct care staff, as we all know, is difficult to hire, so, but it would be great. I mean, yes, so, yes, every week, I think they come in and say, "We really need more space," but it's just figuring that out.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's it. Thank you, Chris.
Yes, thank you.
It's obvious how important this issue is by evidence of the time. We usually do 10 minutes on this. We did 30. So nothing against you guys, it was a good, great presentation, and it is a huge issue in our community, and we're all trying to figure out how to fix it.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Scott. Brief presentation of planning and zoning departments. Scott, you don't get 30 minutes.
Good morning. Scott Anderson, Planning Director. And I think that you're going to be fairly familiar with what planning and zoning does, but many people out in the community, this may serve as some information for them, to give them a better idea of exactly what we do and all the areas that we may be involved in. So, do you want me to advance it myself? Okay. So I sort of have broken this down in where we've come from and sort of where we're going. And to highlight that, one of the, some of the areas that we have already completed, we, as you know, have recently updated our zoning ordinance to add aquaculture to the zoning ordinance. We have updated the zoning ordinance to include a very major revision to the confined animal feeding operation portion of our zoning ordinance. And about a year ago, you may recall, almost to the day, we repealed our drainage ordinance. And I think, looking back at where that has gone, I don't think that we have seen an overwhelming problem with the repeal of the drainage ordinance. And my observations have been that the neighbors have worked well together. We have had one or two circumstances or incidences where maybe there's been some questions, and neighbors have been unhappy with what their neighbor has done, but it has overall worked very, very well, the repeal of the drainage ordinance. Some of the other projects that we've recently completed, we have obtained new digital aerial photography called pictometry, and we have also then had a new product added on to that called Change Finder. It has been very useful, and this, for example, this was a building that we were able to identify, just an example. We have probably had 100 such examples of buildings that have been constructed without building permits and without being on the tax roll, so this is a benefit to the community. One of the other areas we've already completed has been the mobile building permit application for inspections for our building inspector. This basically has allowed him to take a small tablet out into the field. It is connected, and then he's able to track in real time his building inspections. It also keeps track of all the open building permits, as you can see on the map. This shows a general, it shows the open building permits that are out there. It also then tracks things like our conditional use permits that are in process, and it allows, basically allows our building inspector to better utilize his time when he's out in the field and save the county money with reduced trips and just being more efficient. Some of the things also that we have completed would be our, we have recently completed a customer survey link to our website, and this is online, and this was a request that came from the county commission to better see what comments might be out there from the public. So this is online now, and has been online since January 1st. And I think what's also very interesting is, this is a snapshot, a screenshot of our own county internet page, and it will show you some of the many things that we deal with and that we keep track of. Applications, floodplain development, code enforcement, our Red Rock Corridor, our septic information, our newsletter, our rural living publication. We work with CCOG, and we have information that deals with a directory of specialized transportation services to help get the word out for CCOG. We also work with solid waste, with nuisances, so that is one of the things that has already been completed. So on to now what we are doing. We spend a lot of time with code enforcements, with CUP reviews. We issue all the building permits in the county and septic permits, and this is just some examples, some pictures of building permits and septic permits. This gives you an idea of the type of code enforcement that we have, we typically deal with or encounter throughout a year. We still have 46 open complaints, and these are ongoing issues that we deal with, helping people bring their properties into compliance, either one way or the other. The bottom chart shows you the cases that we have already opened in 2018 and the type of cases they are. This year, already 20 nuisance complaints, and 20 zoning complaints, and potentially three CUP and septic, one, three CUP complaints and a septic complaint. And as you are aware, these type of complaints can take a lot of administrative work. There's a lot of going out, checking them, working with the property owner to bring those properties into compliance. This gives you an idea of the number of other permits that we, and applications and workload that we are involved with as a planning department. And the breakdown is from 2017, and then also shows sort of where we are for 2018. Things like conditional use permits, rezonings, variances, text amendments, temporary uses, road vacations, preliminary plan reviews, tourism. So those are all Platts that we approve throughout the county. And then finally, sort of what I see on the horizon, some of the major issues that we're going to be working on, we continue to, I won't say struggle, because it really isn't coming out of our wheelhouse, but we continue to work with the MS4 program, and for those that are not familiar, that's basically a federal program that has been implemented on the county that deals with point source solution or point source pollution. And we are working with DENR and EPA to come up with an ordinance. However, what we have found out is that there's been major transitions in the EPA. The state of South Dakota has been unable to fulfill or to fill the position of their MS4 coordinator, so it has been vacant for more than two years. They have hired a person, that person lasted less than two months and moved on to a different state job. So at this point, we are still obligated to be implementing an MS4 program, but there has been no direction or assistance, or directive, actually, on how the state would like us to implement this program, because there is no state coordinator. And that's also sort of reflected at the federal level, because there's been some litigation on waters of the US and how that plays into MS4. We are already looking at how we're going to be acquiring our 2020 aerial photography, and then, as you know, every 10 years, we are required, under the Constitution, to do a census, and all that falls under my department, and we work directly with the Census Bureau to update the close to 1,000 new address points that have been added in the last 10 years, because we are constantly adding, you know, 50 to 100 new single-family residences, and then other commercial address points. And of course, the Census Bureau is only interested in residences. So we go through and we work with the Census Bureau to update their census tract information and make sure that we do not miss anyone. And some of the other things we hope to pursue next year, or in the coming time here, is I feel like we need to maybe revise our zoning ordinance. We're going to be looking at better ways of reaching out to the public through social media, which would help us with our notices and updates. And then I'd like to move the planning and zoning, continue to move it more to a digital platform for permitting, for inspections, and document review. These are all very important things. I think trying to modernize and make our site more user-friendly, because it's just the way that the economy is going, it's just going to a digital platform. And finally, we also continue to work with many municipalities in our area with some of their planning issues, like Crooks and Hartford and Garrettson. When we sit on, when we have our planning commission, it's quite evident that we have involvement from many communities that are listed, and we've had interest from other states, Minnesota and Iowa, and we work with other counties, with like Lincoln County and Moody County, to, when things come up. So we continue, that continues to be on our horizon of things that we'd like to do. So I would be glad to answer any questions. I'd like to thank my staff for putting together the, David Heinhold did a good job of putting together my PowerPoint presentation, I wanted to thank him as well. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Scott?
I'm sure I would make a comment, I guess. And a couple things... And a couple of things. One is, we still have a, we have a vacancy on our planning commission where there's an unexpired term that we could get a new commissioner appointed to. And so if people in the public are interested, they could apply for that through our county website. Secondly, I would say that other cities, other communities are, have been talking to us about having a joint zone of administration or jurisdiction. And speaking as a person who goes to those meetings, it's pretty cumbersome to have a meeting with a planning commission from another community that they don't show up with a quorum time after time. And it's difficult. I don't want to encourage anybody to have joint jurisdictions with us. And lastly, I'll say about notices. You know, we post signs on zoning properties. It's published in the paper. We send, is it certified or registered, Scott?
Certified return receipt.
Certified letters to the neighbors, and they still show up and say, no one told me. And so I don't know, skywriting or perhaps, I don't know. It's just people are unaware until they're aware, and then that's a panic. And anyway, those are my comments. If you want to be on the planning commission, get your name in.
Thank you, Commissioner Burr.
Chair.
Commissioner Karski.
I personally don't have a lot of interaction with your staff, Scott, but when I do, it's, you know, zoning issues and that type of thing, and always responsive. I enjoyed your presentation. How many are on your staff?
There's six others and myself, so we have a total staff of seven in the planning and zoning department.
And, you know, so many of the citizens of the county do interact with your office and your staff. And when I look at the one screen on, you know, zoning and nuisance and CUP and those, you know, non-compliance issues and how well you handle them, I mean, it would show if we had to take so many of them to the state's attorney's office, but you guys do a great job of resolving those issues before it gets there. So I just wanted to congratulate you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions for planning and zoning? All right. Thank you, Scott, for presenting. Item number 17 is anyhow county liaison reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Burr?
Chair, I didn't mention this last week, but I had a meeting with the fire chiefs recently. And, you know, with the hubbub about ambulance and stuff in our county, I had already spent too much time looking at that as the crisis of the day, the crisis de jour. And they reminded me about the emergency radios, which still need to be resolved. And I know that our legislators are aware, and there are some that are ready to help us with that. But sometimes the latest disaster is the one that takes up all of our time, and I wanted to just remind us about emergency radio.
Thank you, Commissioner Burr. Additional reports?
I had a chamber meeting last week, and it was an extended meeting. We did strategic planning. I thought it was actually very good. Had a lot of conversation about branding, and of course, the hot topic is workforce development. But some very good ideas in that room and some very good conversation. I'd say there was probably 25 people that attended the lion's share of the strategic planning, and I think it was well done. So is there any new business? Is there any old business for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. As opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.
No, Zach.